Good to see you. I am excited because today is the part where you know, the, the foundation that Abraham wants to lay is, is done and then we get into the questions and answers that Jerry asked questions and Abraham responded. And that part is just fabulous. I just absolutely love that part of the book. So I'm What page are we on today? We are starting on
Twenty-four, right?
Page twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-two.
Yeah.
Oh. These are the pages we have done so far. Can you see my notes on the Looks like my book. Yeah, it is. There's so much information.
There's a lot of information. Yeah, exactly. This book is, um, has a lot in it. Every sentence has a lot in the background. So, uh, it's very
You need to read it twice or more than twice. Yes.
Yeah. The Abraham's books, I keep going back to them.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Um, so every couple of years I'll go back. I think Sarah books I go back to almost every year. Um, all the other books I go back to maybe uh, once in a couple of years, you know, like two or three years. But what I love really is, um, listening to whole workshops. This one. This one is one of the best ones. Oh my God. This one is, uh, is a cruise. I, I forget which cruise it is now. I think it's Mexico. It's Mexico from long ago.
What was the name again? The teachings of Abraham?
The master course audio, the master course. So
So master course audio on the teachings of Abraham.
Yeah, it's a, it's a C D set, but
I get it.
What I did was, uh, I converted the C D set to M P threes and then I put it on my YouTube channel. The best parts of it. So, um, so then my YouTube channel came down. Um, but I have been thinking of putting it back together. So I am going to share some of that material with you. I'll share some of that material with you.
Sarah, what do you mean that your, your, your YouTube channel is down? I mean, where do I put those things that I
No, my old one. My old, my old YouTube channel had a lot of material on it that came down in twenty eighteen and then I started a new one.
Oh, I see.
But some of the material from the old one was really, really amazing that I want to put back up. So I just need, um, I just need to clone myself, you know?
No, it's not gonna be perfect.
Alright, let's get started. Hi, Yolanda. Good to see you. Um, so today we are starting with the section, the powerful eternal universal law of attraction. And we're going to get through this section really quickly because everyone here is already familiar with the law of attraction. So I'm just going to pinpoint to you the, the things that as a revision, because you already know this. So right at the bottom of page twenty-two, Abraham says, whether you are thinking about wanted things or unwanted things. You are still sending out a request to attract more things like the subject of your thought. So whether you say yes or you say no, the universe sees it as yes. And they say that on the next page, uh, where, where did they say it? Hmm. There is no such thing as a no in the universe. You cannot, oh, there it is. On page twenty-six, actually. Abraham says, right, if you go to page twenty-five, right at the bottom of the page, the paragraph is you live in a universe that is based upon the law of attraction. That means that this is an inclusion-based universe, not an exclusion-based universe. In other words, in an inclusion-based universe, attraction-based universe, there simply is no such thing as a no. When you look at something wanted and you say yes to it, you are including it in your vibration. And it then becomes part of your vibrational offering. But if you say no to something, if you, when you shout no at something, you are including it in your vibration also. So it then becomes part of your vibrational offering, which means it is part of your point of attraction, which means it begins to come to you. We are on page twenty-six, right at the top, the first paragraph. So you cannot say no to something and have it go away. When you say no, you are actually saying yes. And when you say yes, you are also saying yes. It's very interesting, uh, Abraham's talks, whenever there's been an election in the U S and Abraham has been talking about it. What they say is you cast your vibrational vote. It's not just the vote that and I think I've got, I've got blog posts about it on, on my blog, but what Abraham says, which is so beautiful, is that you cast your vibrational vote. And it's not just the vote that you put in the ballot box. When you say no to something, you are casting a vote for it. And when you say yes to something, you're also casting a vote to it. And so people who push against something actually make that bigger. So people who don't want a candidate actually end up electing that candidate. Because you cannot say no. No means yes and yes means yes. One of the earliest quote boxes that I did on my, you, on my Facebook page from Abraham, those are Abraham's words. No means yes and yes means yes. And, and it stuck with me because it's such a powerful way of remembering the law of attraction. It just captures it all in one sentence. Yes means yes and no means yes. Just remember that. Alright, so let's keep going from here. Now, on page twenty-three. Abraham says that noticing how things are turning out for you is one very clear way of understanding which vibrational requests you are sending out into the universe. So our manifestations are a way for us to understand what our emotional output is. Are we, are we outputting the right emotion or not? Our, our manifestations tell us. So this is why I was talking to someone yesterday in a coaching session. And this beautiful woman said to me, well, money is not important. Money is not the only important thing. And when she said that, when she said that, and, and that is, you know, that is a point of view that is, uh, held uh, high by a lot of people. My, my parents used to think that way. Money is not the only important thing, they used to say. And as I have learned from Abraham, the teachings of Abraham, is that that's just an excuse for saying, I'm a lazy thinker and I can't create more money. Because the thing is, the creation of money, the creation of wealth is an indication that you know how to think your thoughts. It is a manifestation that confirms to you your level of alignment. So don't be shy about it. You should absolutely want a lot of money and manifest a lot of money because when you do that, you're going to give yourself a pat on the back and say, I did it. I wanted it and here it is. The universe is listening to me. So don't be shy asking for wealth. And appreciate those people who are clearly showing you that it is possible. Appreciate them because you want to be like them. Cause they are indicating to you how manifestation works. They ask and it happens. And people tell them it's not possible, but they do it anyway. And it happens. And don't you want to be like that? Don't you want to be someone that when, um, people say, oh, that's just not going to work, that you can prove all of them wrong? Don't you want to be like that? Of course you do. We all do. We want to be like that. So go ahead and want powerfully. And then don't put your foot on the brake, release the brakes. And go forward at full speed and manifest those things that you want. Don't be shy. I mean, in my culture, you know, it, it, it used to be like, oh, that person is so, uh, always showing off, always proud of their accomplishments. Yes, you should be. No need to be humble about your accomplishments. Be proud. Because when you're proud, you're appreciating yourself. And when you're appreciating yourself, guess what's happening? More good things are coming to yourself. Imagine this scenario, just for one second. I, I, I'm very excited. So I'm going to put this here. Imagine the scenario. You accomplish something amazing. And now you're talking to a family member or a friend. And they say, oh, congratulations, you did this amazing thing. And you say, yeah, no, it's not that amazing. It's just, you know, ordinary. Yeah, it's not, it's not just, you know, and it's not important. What are you saying? Do you understand that the universe is responding to those words? So the universe is saying, oh, you don't like this. You don't think it's important. Okay, we won't give you any more of this. Cause I mean, you're saying no to it. You don't want it anymore. So your wish is my command. You don't want it. We won't give it to you anymore. You gotta appreciate yourself.
So what will be the best response if somebody says you did an amazing thing?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Yes, I'm really happy. Thank you for sharing my joy. Thank you. And you know what? I so thank God or the universe or whatever you want to call it for helping me with, because without that help, I could not have achieved it. But thank you. Thank you. I mean, imagine someone who is gone representing their country in the Olympics and they win the gold. Imagine that, you know, when it's time to stand on the steps to receive their medal, they say, oh, no. No, it's okay. It's okay. Don't give me this medal. But that's what you're doing if you don't appreciate your own accomplishment. Is there anyone who's going to say, oh, don't tell anyone I did it, you know? Don't tell anyone in my country that I won this gold. It doesn't really matter. It's not important. Don't, don't, let's not talk about it. Let's not talk about it. I don't want to talk about it. No. Does anyone do that? No, they don't. They talk about it because they want more of it. They want that recognition. That recognition from themselves and from others is a vibration of thankfulness going into the universe saying, I love this universe. Can I have more of it? You want to celebrate your accomplishments. You want to say, I did it. It's so much fun even just to see, like Mercedes was saying before you guys joined the call, she was saying how she was thinking about a friend, Renee, or I, I don't remember the name. Um, and then that friend called. And, and to her, it was a manifestation. She was celebrating it. Well, then celebrate the other things as well. Celebrate the accomplishments that you're having because you want that vibrant, you want that vibration to go into the universe and bring you more things to celebrate. But if you don't celebrate the things that you should be celebrating, then you're basically telling the universe, I don't need things to celebrate because you know what? I don't really enjoy celebrating. Celebrating things is so embarrassing to me. I, I, I don't want to do it. So please, universe, you know what? Please hold back on all those things that require celebration because I just can't celebrate it. It's very embarrassing. It's, just keep it, you know, keep, keep that promotion. You keep that bonus, keep it, keep it. I, I don't want it because then that means I have to celebrate and you know, if I celebrate, I'll just be acting like a big shot and you know what? I don't want to do that because what will everyone else say? You just keep that, you know, just don't give it to me. If you give it to me, I won't know what to do with it. I'll have to give it back. Oh my God. You know, folks, I'm, I'm serious. I had to do a lot of work on myself to get over that mentality because that was the mentality of my parents. No need to tell it, oh, you came first in your class. Let's not tell anyone about it. You might catch the evil eye. Let's not talk about it. Oh my God, don't do that. When you have some But what, well, that was their way of thinking.
But why?
That was just their way of thinking. Who cares why? That is what they grew up with. Because they thought that if you celebrate and people find out what you're celebrating, you're going to catch the evil eye.
Oh, I see.
Okay, jealousy. They want, so they wanted to avoid jealousy by not celebrating things that should be celebrated, not knowing that when you don't celebrate, when you're celebrating, you're basically offering thanks to the universe. So if you tell the universe, give the wrong signal out and you say, oh, I, I no need to celebrate this. Let's not talk about it. Well, then the universe is going to say, okay, you don't want things to celebrate. That's fine. I got your message. I won't send you more things to celebrate. Right? Don't do that. Celebrate. Celebrate. Oh my God, um. Anyone here familiar with Harv Ecker? Harv Ecker? No. Um, amazing teacher. He was included in the first, um, secret movie. He's the author of The Millionaire Mind. Uh, beautiful, amazing person. Amazing person. And he, I've attended programs with him. Before I ever met Abraham, I had already met Harv. Um, and you know, if he finds a penny on the ground, he picks it up and he does the dance of winning the lottery, you know? He gets so excited over a penny on the ground. Because why? Because he's telling the universe, I really love and appreciate money. Give me more, give me more, give me more. So what I want to drive in to drive home today is the fact that wanting material things, there's nothing wrong with it. It's a good thing to want and manifest and then celebrate. Because remember, when you start understanding how the emotional scale works, you don't worry about the fact that other people are going to be jealous. Because you understand that if they are jealous, then they are low on the emotional scale and they cannot take anything away from you because each one of us creates our own. Nobody's evil eye is ever going to get you. Their evil eye only ever gets them because it keeps them low on the emotional scale. So you never have to stop or pull yourself back from exhibiting your exuberance and your joy for living based on what other people are going to think and say. Be exuberant about your accomplishments. Because that's a message to the universe saying, come on, give me more, give me more, give me more. Right? And look at those people who make no secret of their wealth. Look at them. They have more, they attract more wealth. Alright, let's get back to, uh, it. So we are on page twenty-three. It is possible, so second paragraph, it is possible to become aware of the attracting of an unwanted situation and to head it off. Provided you know your emotional guidance system. And I really want to talk about this because the universe will send you small manifestations to tell you that you're heading in the wrong direction. And if you pay attention to those small manifestations, then you stop and you turn things around and, and the big bad stuff never happens. Because you were listening to the small stuff. That is the analogy of the car at the top of the hill. And you just nudge it forward, but then you go and you stop it from going downwards. Right? But once it starts going downwards, you cannot stand in front of it because it will just maul you to the ground and keep going. So this is what Abraham means is pay attention to the small indicators. Let me tell you a little story. This is many, many years ago. Many, many years ago, um, I, uh, I was listening to an ad. Media. I no longer do this, folks, but you know, many years ago, I was listening to an ad on the radio as I was driving and the ad said, if you get a chink in your windshield, don't worry about it. Just come to us and we'll fix it for you. And I thought, wow, amazing. You mean, you don't have to replace the whole windshield? You can just get a chink in the windshield? You can get it fixed? So I thought that thought. A couple of days later. So after everything happened, that's when I retraced my steps. But the next thing that happened is that I was going on the, um, the highway. And there was a truck in front of me, not exactly in front of me, like it was, you know, a couple of, uh, yards ahead of me. And it was one of these, uh, trucks that carry construction material. And this particular truck was carrying little stones, little pebbles that they put on the driveways before they, uh, sealed the driveways. They, they kind of had, it had that kind of a thing. And guess what happened? They started flying off the top soon as I got behind the truck. And then guess what happened? Of course, one of them created a little nick in my windshield. And I thought, oh, isn't it wonderful that I already have the information about what to do about this? And I went on my way. Um, that week happened to be a really busy week. Every time I got in the, in the car, I looked at that little nick. And I said, yes, gotta get that fixed, gotta get that fixed, gotta get that fixed. And, um, and that happened for, I think, close to two weeks. That I kept saying, yeah, I gotta get that fixed. Then guess what happened? Because I wasn't listening. Cause this indication was coming, come on, you gotta do something. And I wasn't listening. So then guess what happened? One day I woke up and went out and that little nick had become a great big crack all the way from the top to the bottom of the windshield. And I was like, gosh, I should have got it fixed when it was small. Now can't get it fixed, have to get it replaced. But then the realization came, okay, I created this. I created this. And then I retraced my steps in my mind and I found out how I created it. And then the next problem was, uh, but I don't have the money to get it fixed now. I'm going to have to get a whole new windshield. And I don't want to go to my insurance for this because it's not big enough to go to insurance, but it's big enough that I don't have the money. And, and then I decided, uh, no, I'm going to follow Abraham's advice. I created this. I can turn it around. And a day or two later, I was just looking for something. My son or my daughter had asked me for something. And I have this, uh, uh, filing cabinet where, um, I keep papers that, you know, like vaccination certificate. That was what it was. My son needed his vaccination record for school. And so I went into my files, looking for his vaccination certificate. And as I'm going through the files, I find seven hundred dollars among the papers. Seven hundred dollars just lying there among the papers. And I was like, wow. And it was just a fifty dollar differential or something for me to get the whole windshield done. So I got the whole windshield and I was like, wow, where did that money? I am pretty sure I would not have put seven hundred dollars just laying there among my files. I'm not that crazy. So where did, I still have no idea where that money came from. All I can say is, I asked, the universe provided. But what happened in between, it's wonderful to tell the story and to show you that the money came. But what happened in between is what needs sharing, is that I had a thought, that thought manifested. And then I did nothing. The car was nudged forward and I did nothing to stop it. So the car went downhill. And the windshield, you know, broke into two. But then I listened, finally. And I did something to turn my vibration around and the money appeared effortlessly. Right? But had I listened, it would have cost me thirty dollars, not seven hundred dollars. Yes, Mercedes.
So what did you do to turn the vibration around?
The same thing I teach all of you to do. Get off the subject and tell yourself, the universe is going to figure this out for me.
So if you have an unwanted thought, something that, I mean, because, I mean, it strikes me about the no and the yes. And so sometimes I get something in my mind and I say, no. And now I, so what I need to do is just to change the subject, think about something else, but not reject it.
Well, here's the thing. What you're referring to is something different. What you're referring to is saying, I'm not going down that rabbit hole. See, and that's okay. Because what you're saying is I'm going to stop thinking this way. And, and it's okay. It's when you say no to, for example, um, instead of saying, instead of saying, I would like to manifest more money, instead of saying that, you're saying, I don't have enough money. That's the no. Okay?
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah. So what you're doing is not the same thing. I actually tell people, stop and see like a big red stop sign in your head when you're going negative. Stop right there. Tell yourself, big difference, not going there, not going there. Going to go and think about something else. And then be firm, get off the subject. Right? Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, that, that no is not the no we mean. Okay? Yes. Yeah, go ahead. I'm just grabbing water, sorry. Just reaching over for my water bottle. Go ahead.
Sometimes it's hard to get off the subject when the situation is hot. Just something happened and you tried to look at the trees, but it will take your attention for a couple of minutes away and then your mind switch back.
Of course.
To that hot situation and it's still in your mind and it talks and it talks.
Yeah.
And I tried, but it's not working. I'm like, Sarah said, but it's not working.
Sweetheart, because you're telling yourself it's not working. And you're telling yourself, and on top of that, you're telling yourself it's hard. You can't say that something is hard and then have it go away. It will just become harder.
No, I, I related later because I, it's No, I I related later, uh because I, it's it's not, it's not. Must be something else, you know. It's uh some somebody was rude to you and you are talking about trees. It's not my chance. That's fine. You know, is there anything else to help uh at this point?
Um I uh tell me again.
Okay, the person was rude to me in a store.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
So, uh and and of course I got upset.
Okay.
And I tried to switch my attention.
Yes.
But, okay, I switched it for a couple of minutes, I talked how beautiful the sky and the stars.
Yes.
And then when I stopped it, my brain came came back to that situation.
Alright, here's the thing. Yes, your brain will come back to the situation, but it'll come back a little bit better. And that's the point where you have to do the four-step process. Because you have to remind yourself that the person who was rude to you in the store didn't come out of thin air. That person who was rude to you in the store is a manifestation that is a result of how you were thinking and feeling. That is a manifestation, that's a message that the universe is sending you saying, uh Elena, you're not doing as good a job as you think you're doing. Here's a person who's going to remind you, you gotta do a better job. So had you listened, it's exactly like the story that I just told you. Had I listened, the chink in the windshield would not have become a crack. So the chinks, you you never notice the chinks. Nothing happens out of the blue. I, there's this Abraham track that says, Abraham said, nothing happens out of the blue, things happen because you were not paying attention. You were just not paying attention to the indications, the little things that were happening. And then the universe said, okay, she's not listening to me, let's send her a really rude person to shake her awake and let her know that she's not doing a good enough job of thinking. She is being a lazy thinker. We have to give her a bigger manifestation to catch her attention. So when you understand how law of attraction works, you can never be angry with anyone else because you start understanding, the only reason they were rude to you was because of you. You attracted them, you called them into your experience. You cannot be upset with anyone when you truly understand how law of attraction works, because you understand you create your own reality.
Um hmm, it's not mention, o- o- okay, I was driving to the store, I was in a good mood, I was talking about.
No, no, Elena. No, no, Elena, it's it's about the balance of energy that you have created, not on that day. It's it's not something that you created on that day, it's been going on for a while.
Oh, okay.
It's been going on for a while and those little indications have been happening. How? Because of you've got this emotional scale inside you that tells you, there have been times that you have not been feeling good enough, but you've ignored those indications. And then it will result in a manifestation.
Uh-huh.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that's how it works. That is your emotional guidance system.
Like twenty minutes before entering the store, I was in a good mood, but before those twenty minutes, my vibrations were kind of down a little bit, yeah.
That you cannot, here's the one thing that you need to understand, and that is, law of attraction is exact. Law of attraction is absolutely exact and it is absolutely fair. Therefore, if something happens, you've got to find your role in it. Because it wasn't law of attraction that made a mistake. It is never law of attraction that makes a mistake.
Okay, thank you, I forgot it.
So the only answer ever has to be, you were not paying attention. And so the universe wanted to catch your attention. And now that the universe has your attention, there's only one thing to do. Appreciate. Because you know that the universe was basically telling you, not doing a good enough job of appreciation.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's true.
Awesome, that really helps to illustrate what we were talking about. And so with that, Abraham says, uh and this is page twenty-three, when you focus upon a subject, third paragraph, when you focus upon a subject or situation and you feel bad, it is not the subject or the situation that is the reason for your bad feeling. You feel bad because the thoughts you are having are not the way the universe or your inner being is looking at things. Read the underlined passage right at the bottom of that uh paragraph. Source understands the power of attraction and does not want to add to the creation of unwanted things. And when you do, you feel bad every time. So any time that you look at things in a manner that source is not looking at them, then you feel bad. And that, see, here's the thing, Abraham talks about this a lot. Cap, in the beginning, that bad feeling is very soft and subtle, because it does not have momentum. If you br- it's very easy to brush it aside because it's very subtle. And it's not until you've spent a couple of minutes, maybe even hours, in that unpleasant place, that momentum actually gets started enough that you can feel it inside. And when you become someone who has, who has become used to being strong, Elena, now you know, you and I have had many conversations, when you have become someone who is supposed to be strong and don't show emotion and don't be a pansy, then what happens is, you brush aside those subtle indications that come from your emotions, you brush them aside, and you say, oh, that's not important. But it is, because if you catch it right then, then the big bad hairy manifestation never has to happen. Makes sense? So it's just, again, it's the uh uh it's more clarification and it's interesting that we're discussing this here instead of in the Sunday uh live Q and A group, Elena. Uh but the the what is perfect is that this is exactly explaining what happened. So thank you for coming today and sharing with us. Alright, let's move on to the next page. Page twenty-four, second paragraph, Abraham says, in any moment, you really only have access to two emotions. Two emotions. There are really, so even though the emotional scale is twenty-two different emotions, but there are really only two ways to feel. One that feels good, the other that feels bad. And that is why I've simplified the emotional scale. I, it, when I read the book, and I did not read the book Ask and It Is Given first, I read the book uh Astonishing Power of Emotions first, before I read Ask and It Is Given. And the twenty-two um level scale is in that book. It drove me nuts to wonder whether I was at this mo- am I frustrated or am I worried? Which, like, where am I? I couldn't do it. So I simplified the emotional scale. And I said to myself, all I need to do is, I need to ask myself, how am I feeling on a scale of one to ten? Do I feel like a ten to ten, ten out of ten? Like, do I feel really good? Or do I feel less than five? If I feel less than five, I'm on the negative side of the emotional scale. And that's how I I created the scale of one to ten for myself, because I don't know about you guys, but a lot of my schoolwork used to be graded out of ten or a hundred. And it's very easy for me to know if I'm feeling a hundred percent or if I'm feeling a fifty percent. I can, I I I don't have to put a a descriptive label on it. And so um it it follows from the same concept, you, all you need to know is whether you're feeling good or bad. That's it. And here's the piece, people, a little bit bad is bad. Remember that. Uh feeling a little bit bad is bad, it's bad enough. It's the amber light, the red light's coming next. Don't brush it aside and say, oh, that's not important. A little bit bad is bad. Do something about it. Change it while it's still amber to green. Because amber goes to green, amber goes to red. When you're at amber, you can go either way. And you control that. Right? Awesome. Oh, now the best part of the book has started. Um this is Jerry and and Abraham having questions and answers and I just absolutely love this part of it. So Jerry is asking Abraham this question on page twenty-four. Since we are all so different, it doesn't seem to me that there is much chance of us ever coming together on common agreements about how we should all live life. And Abraham says, we agree, and it would be a very boring place if that were the case. Imagine all of us decide that from this day forward, we are all going to wear, I don't know, pick a color, white. Everybody in the world is just going to wear white. And we are going to paint our houses white and all of us will have white cars. And uh all our dishes and everything is just going to be white. Where's the fun in that, right? There's no fun in that. Same-ness li- is boring. That's why we have so much variety in the world. So Jerry then says to Abraham, since we are all different and we want different things, how can we move forward without feeling the pain of having to put up with or tolerate those differences in others? And Abraham is saying, your pain or negative emotion is not because of your disagreement with another person. It is always about the dis- disagreement between you and you. Because your inner being is not looking at that person the way you're looking at that person. Even though you don't like them, your inner being does. Your inner being sees the perfection of everyone. Your inner being does not think that someone not agreeing with you or being different from you is anything wrong. So, as we were talking about just a minute ago, is you withdraw your attention so that you feel better. And if you withdraw your attention for long enough, the pain will subside. The importance of that thing will go away. But if you cannot, if your attention re- returns to it, then you have to do the emotional work, the self as the self-soothing self-talk in order to make it feel better. Those are the only, and that is why I teach, get off the subject and then do the four-step process. Get off the subject and do the four-step process, because you've got to do the self-talk. Now, some subjects you never have to go back to again because they're just not important enough. Someone that you meet in in the store who is rude to you, it does not really deserve much attention because you're never gonna see them again, hopefully. Right? So you don't have to clean it up. But if your son or your daughter is rude to you, or your spouse is rude to you, someone you work with is rude to you, you have to clean it up, because you will come across that person again. It's not like you're just going to throw them out of your life and never have anything to do with them. So now you do have to come back to the subject and do the vibrational work in order to soothe yourself so that you can feel better about it. So, um so that's what Abraham is saying. So if you come back to it, then talk about what you do want. Right? So as you focus longer still upon something that you do want, not only will you no longer feel pain, but you will feel positive emotion, such as interest or eagerness or happiness. So that's why the four-step process is, here I am, where do I wanna go? Step two, step three, soothe myself to feel better, step four, appreciation. Right? Now you've you've cleaned it up. We clean up things that keep coming back to us, but the analogy Abraham uses is if somebody calls you that you do not know and they say, I will never call you again, you don't care. Right? That's the analogy that fits here. But if somebody calls you and and it's someone that you care about and they say, I will never call you again, that's like a jab in your heart. What do you do? You do the same thing. You get off the subject, feel a little bit better, come back and then do the self-talk to feel better about it. You forgive yourself, you forgive that person, you say things like, I don't know what's going on, but whatever it is, our relationship is stronger than that. We will figure it out. I'll figure it out. I care about this person, they know that. So that's the self-soothing self-talk. And then you get on to appreciation. You can appreciate that person or you can appreciate the tree in your background, doesn't matter, because the subject of your appreciation is not important. It's just the vibration of appreciation that is important. That's the four-step process. That's what Abraham is talking about over here. Okay? I didn't evolve this the four-step process on my own. I just paid attention to what Abraham is saying and I systematized it, that's all. Alright, so then uh Jerry says, but since we are all somehow connected, how can a person le- learn to allow the uncomfortable things that are occurring in other people's lives? So Abraham says, all understanding comes through the comparative living of life, and by comparative, we mean weighing all current observations against the true knowledge that emanates from your source. From broader perspective, you know that attention to unwanted things adds to them, and so the source part of you withdraws attention from all things that are unwanted. And when you do not withdraw your attention from things that are unwanted, that's when you feel pain. Okay? So instead of reading the rest of it, I'm summarizing it. The source part of you withdraws attention from all things that are unwanted, and when you do not, that is why you feel pain. If so- if somebody is inappropriate, your inner being does not pay attention to that. Refuses to acknowledge. I remember Abraham saying once, we never have to forgive because we never take uh take exception to anything. Therefore, we never have to forgive. That is the uh way source looks at everything. So when you're taking exception to something, that means you're not looking at that thing through the eyes of source, right? So remember that. Those are Abraham's words. We never have to forgive because we never take exception to anything. So there's never anything to forgive or forget. And that's what Abraham is saying over here. Source never looks at unwanted. So um then further down in the paragraph, in that absence of alignment, you are of no value to the person you are worrying about or angry with. That is extremely important to understand, that when you are low on the emotional scale, you are of no value to anyone and not to yourself either. Because when you are low, when you're out of alignment, you're not sending out a positive vibration into the universe. And so you cannot attract a positive um outcome from that. So then Jerry says, but won't others feel abandoned if we withdraw our attention from the pain they are experiencing? Don't we have some responsibility to help those in need? And Abraham says, here is an opportunity to begin to understand a basic flawed premise of your society. And that is, if I push hard enough against unwanted things, they will go away. And what I want to say here is, if someone is feeling bad and you too are feeling bad, then you're not helping them to feel better. Every time a friend makes you feel better is because they help you to see things in a different way. You feel better when, if you have a problem and you go and you talk to a friend, that friend says, don't worry about it, it's gonna be alright. Don't worry about it. Right? You can figure it out, we can figure it out together. So what that is doing is that friend is calling you up the emotional scale. And if you go, then you feel better. But if you don't go, And if you go, then you feel better. But if you don't go, then nothing changes. The thing that happens is when you go up, the field of all possibilities in quantum physics, the field of all possibilities. Opens up at a whole different level. So, let's see if I can show you the diagram. Okay, let's see if I can find it first. Yeah, maybe this one is good. This is a good one to show. Let's see if I can get it close up enough so you can see. Alright, so, so you see here, these are all the possibilities. And this is the emotional scale. So from this place on the emotional scale, you can only access these things. But what happens is when we are here, low on the emotional scale, we actually want these things. But we can't get to them. We first have to go up the emotional scale and only then. These opportunities can open up for us. Make sense? Yeah. So that's why Abraham says, always do the work to go up the emotional scale first. Yes, Andrew?
Wha- what book is that from?
Oh, that's from Thrive.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, um, so the work that we have to do is first we go up the emotional scale. And then, then, so don't even try. When you're low on the emotional scale, don't take any action. So, a, a quick example is I was talking to someone and she just dumped her boyfriend. Why did you dump your boyfriend? Well, because I, I sent him. For the last five days, I've been sending him messages and he has not replied. Okay? I accept that that does not feel good. You weren't feeling good, right? Yes, I wasn't feeling good. I wanted to kill him. How can he treat me like this? Alright, so where does that put you on the emotional scale, sweetheart? Pretty low. I was feeling low on the emotional scale. Alright then, um, what do you think you should have done? Should you have acted from a place low on the emotional scale? Or should you have done the work to go up the emotional scale first? So this is what happens. People rush into doing things. And then they regret them. Right? So. That's why Abraham says, go up the emotional scale and then act. Then take action. Because any action that you take from a place low on the emotional scale is not going to be satisfying. So now she's angry because, and now it's a matter of ego because now she doesn't wanna go back. Right? So there's this whole cycle that started and it's plummeting. So anyway, coming back here. Um, so then, the next thing. Jerry says, but since we are all somehow connected, how can a person learn to allow? The uncomfortable things that are occurring in other people's lives, which brings us right back to Elena's beautiful question. How can we allow things that are occurring in other people's lives? Abraham says. Source part of you withdraws attention from all things that are unwanted. And so should you. Because if you do what the source part of you does, then you won't feel bad. You are of no value to the person you are worrying or angry with, worrying about or angry with. And then Jerry says, but won't others feel abandoned? And Abraham says, if I push hard enough against unwanted things, they will go away. And this is where Abraham always points our attention to, to the people who take on a movement. To push against something. You, when you push against something, you invariably end up making it bigger. And that's where Abraham is saying, in an inclusion-based, attraction-based universe, there's simply no such thing as a no. When you look at something wanted and you say yes to it, you are including it. And when you say no to it, you are also including it. So remember that quote from Abraham, yes means yes and no means yes. Just remember that. Right? You are of no advantage whatsoever to anyone who has your negative attention. When you observe something in another that causes you to feel bad while you are observing it. Your negative emotion is your indicator that you're adding to something unwanted. And here's where we, we are talking about the early subtle stages of negative emotion. This is what I was telling you. In the early stages of negative emotion, you may merely feel discomfort. And a lot of us just brush it aside. It doesn't matter. I'm just gonna brush it aside. Don't do that. Acknowledge your discomfort, clean it up and go up the emotional scale. But if you continue your focus upon unwanted things, unwanted things will become to appear in your own experience in increasingly. Prominent ways, prominent ways. It's going to become bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, prominent ways. Okay? Um, in every conscious moment, your point of attraction is active. And this is, this is why I wrote the book. How to pray so that God listens? Because the, the opening line in that book is, every thought is a prayer. Not just the thoughts that you think when you're journaling. Not just the thoughts that you think when you're making a list of appreciation. Every thought that you think is being heard and responded to. And that's why there's a balance of thoughts. There's a balance of thoughts. Which side is the balance swinging? To the negative side or the positive side? Whichever side it's swinging to is what will manifest in your life. So then Abraham says, the second last paragraph, right at the end of it, the last sentence, you cannot stand still. If you are awake, you are in the process of expansion because you are thinking. You are thinking and a lot, a lot of people don't see it as thinking, but you're focusing all the time. Your attention is on something all the time, as long as you're awake. You're giving your attention to something. And by giving your attention to it, see, because here's what I realized from many years of coaching, what I've realized is that people. Don't think that they are thinking when they flip a switch. Oh, that's, I'm not thinking when I flip a switch. I just flip the switch. Yes, but you're focusing and focusing is thinking. So a lot of times, people don't think that they are thinking when they're doing tasks that they are used to doing, like. Washing the dishes or weeding and stuff like that. They think that they are not thinking, but they are. Your, your mind is never turned off, just like your heart is never turned off. It's always thinking about something because it's always focusing on something. And being a deliberate creator means we get to decide what we are going to focus on. Okay? So then the last paragraph is, whenever you know what you do not want, you always know more clearly what you do want. So in a, um, in a moment of awareness of another person's undesirable situation, you automatically launch your version. Of an improved situation forward into your vibrational reality. Now your work, your value to that person, your value to yourself, your natural state of being. Is to give your undivided attention to the idea of improvement that has hatched from your interaction or observation. And as you learn to do that, not only will you be of increasing value to others. But you will see how your relationships with others add immeasurably to your own becoming. Alright, folks, I am going to stop here. And then next time we will start this section, learning the art of allowing. Very exciting. So we are stopping at the end of page twenty-six and we'll pick it up again on page twenty-seven. If anyone has any questions, I will stay and be happy to respond to questions. So let's see. Uh, Mercedes, any questions?
Yes, I guess I'll leave it for Sunday because I need to get ready for, for an appointment.
Alright, I'll see you at the Sunday Q and A. Alright, awesome. Yes, Andrew, go ahead.
You said something a few weeks ago about a quantum physics meeting or something?
Uh, quantum physics, yes. I'm planning that for February twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And I have not yet posted the details. It's on my list of things to do. So it's going to be February twenty-sixth at around two P M in the afternoon, one thirty or two.
Okay, and that's where will you post those details?
Um, hmm, I'll ask Karen if I can post them in Abraham Fund, otherwise they'll be posted in my. Group, which is Unlimited Life.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Alright.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Um. Am I right? Uh, it's two different entities, mind or our brain and inner being?
No. They are not two entities, they are two perspectives of the same entity.
Yeah, but they're not one. They are two different kind of.
No, they are one, but the perspective divides them. So you and your soul are the same, but if you think through your mind, you are separating. If you think through your heart, then you and your soul are one.
So our mind influence our soul?
It, our mind does not influence our soul. All the pain that you feel is because you, you are adopting a perspective different from your soul. The soul part of us is the inner being part of us and that's why we talk about heart and mind alignment. Your mind is the one that goes astray and you need to bring it back. Okay? Awesome. Your question actually, Elena, is a very big question and cannot. I'm, I'm giving you the summarized version of it, but it's truly, it, it needs a lot more understanding. And I'm happy to play with you when we do our meeting in the Unlimited Three Sixty-Five group, okay?
Yeah, because I believe many people would love to know this. It's kind of a little bit, not, not that much clear.
Okay, so we'll talk about it on Sunday when we meet, okay?